Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for July 2nd, 2019. I've asked my colleague Bill to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. You all, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Let me begin with some announcements. I'll remind everyone to sign in and make sure your microphone is turned on when you address the board, so that the folks at home can hear you on the microphone. Our next meeting after tonight is July 16th at 7:00 PM. Before we dive much deeper into our affairs, let me point Nelson into a voting position for Lynn. And then I want to call special attention to Kelly, who's last night, she's moving on from Merrimack to take a position in Milford and has been of great service for us at the Planning Board, supporting us from the staff's position. And we couldn't have done the things that we do without you, and we wish you all the luck in the world. Thank you, thank you for all that you've done, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else to throw a comment on that? Just Nelson, put some hands together? We never like to see good people move on, but I'm also glad that people that work here for a while find that that leads to new opportunities for them elsewhere, so that's pretty good, too. With that call to order, it brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Robert?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any questions by members of the Board for the staff? Seeing none, that brings us to the portion of our meeting dedicated for the annual meeting, where we have two bits of business to take on. One is to consider our rules of procedure, and the other is to consider the appointment and election of officers. We have distributed a set of Planning Board Rules of Procedure. I've asked Tim and the staff to consider a couple of edits for us to look at tonight, and so there's a copy on your space. What I had noted was that, beginning on page three, there was a description of our Order of Business which proposed a very strict sequence of events that we would undertake, and it generally doesn't fit the order that we've ever done business. And so I've asked them to indicate that it's a suggested list, or a generally-to-be-followed list, and also to edit a couple of places where there were some things on there that they, we didn't do. So there's some red-line changes at the bottom of page three. I would add also that under number 11, Tim deleted the word "engineering" in one place but left it in another. There's this notion of accepting application for engineering review, and of course, our acceptance is for review. Engineering review isn't a particular status, so deleting the word "engineering" in the second place that it appears on line two, as well as the one on line three, is a suggestion that I bring forward to the Board to consider. With that, I don't know if anybody else has any suggested amendments to our Rules of Procedure.
Mr. Chairman, if none, I will make a motion that we accept the Rules of Procedure dated, amended as 7 to 2019, as given to us this evening.
Second.
May I ask the maker of the motion whether the amendment I suggested tonight to number 11 on page three to delete the second appearance of the word "engineering" is consistent with your motion?
Certainly, I will go along with that.
And the second?
That's the Teflon.
Okay. Any other discussion on the Rules of Procedure? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are four tonight, four zero zero, to accept the Rules of Procedure. The next Order of Business is to open the floor to consider the appointment of officers for the Board, and our officers are a Chair and a Vice Chair. What's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Robert Best to be Chairman of the Planning Board.
Second. Any other nominations? Do you want to consider any nominations for Vice Chair? We'll do one vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would move Alistair Mills as Vice Chairman of the Merrimack Planning Board.
I'll second that one, too.
Any other nominations? I think it's a shame that we don't have more of our Board members here to consider such questions and to also potentially take some opportunities if they're interested, but since we are...
I'm pretty certain, Mr. Chairman, that's why they're not getting nominated.
The outcome, this is the outcome.
They don't want to get nominated.
Been doing this for a while, yeah. Okay. With that in mind, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to elect the officers. It is my privilege to serve, it always has been, and it always will be, so thank you very much for that.
May I echo that comment?
Okay. That concludes the business under the annual meeting of the Planning Board, and we are item four on our agenda. Kinsley, Osgood, Barnard, applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review for a change of use to allow a dog grooming business within a building addition to the existing home. In addition to the existing residential dwelling, the parcel's located at 9 Harris Avenue in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 61, Lot 38, Case Planning Board 2019-19. It is continued from our June 4th Planning Board meeting. Robert or Kelly, Kelly, anything more that we need to know?
So, the applicant has provided a revised plan since the last meeting, and they have addressed a majority of municipal and Board comments. So with that, we'll let the applicant go forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then tell us what's, where we at with the update.
Certainly, this is Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services. As was mentioned, this is a continuation from the June 4th Planning Board meeting.
Is your microphone on?
It is on, yes it is. Just waiting for the projector to turn on behind you. But I can continue. If the Board recalls, this is kind of a unique site. It's commercially zoned, but it's got a residential use on it. It's a dwelling on there, about a hundred-year-old house. They're looking to expand it with a 600-square-foot addition. The addition is by and large all residential use, but there's about 100-square-foot commercial space in it for dog grooming. The Board recalls, there was some discussion almost considering this a home occupation. It's, the way it's zoned and the way it's sighted makes it a little bit difficult and has to comply with full site plan requirements. We had some discussions at the last meeting regarding parking, parking calculations, whether dedicated spaces were needed or not. We're going to have basically an access drive to the proposed addition. Since it's for drop-off only, we don't see a need for a dedicated space. There's no waiting room in this building at all, so there's no need for a dedicated space. By and large, it's for residential use, so I think the driveway and the parking fulfilled. The reasons we were continuing, there were some clerical errors on the plans, transposed book and page number, basically better depicted the driveway accessing the addition. There was a fence in the rear of the property that crossed over the property line. We're noting that to be relocated and adjusted. By and far, I think we've cleaned up the plan, and it meets the intent of what we're trying to do here, and if the Board members have any questions or comments.
Do any members of the Board have questions or comments?
Have you had any discussions with Captain John Manuelli about extinguishing systems?
There has been a discussion that he's going to require a fire suppression system, and I believe that was based on the original application, where this was almost entirely a commercial space, dog boarding, dog grooming, et cetera. I've left that up to the applicant to have that discussion with Captain John Manuelli, as I think he might reconsider, but I'm not in the position to make that determination.
So that's still a question, Mark?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think for my benefit, I'd be in favor of just including our usual condition, that you address whatever forthcoming comments come from the Fire Department, and that allows you to have that conversation, and if you're successful, good for you, and if you're not, then you've got to comply with those requirements. I don't know what the rest of our Planning Board members think. I trust the judgment of our Fire Marshal.
So do I, Mr. Chairman.
I'm okay with that.
Other comments or questions? Any member of the public or butters wish to weigh in on this application? Close the public hearing then, and if there's no questions by members of the Board, is the Board prepared to take any final action?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one other comment? That the Public Works Department has made a couple of comments about utility lines and wetlands in the rear of the lot should be shown on the plot, on the plan.
Yes, I've had conversations with Don Twamwell regarding those comments. In addition to that, it was the concrete apron at the entrance of the right-of-way. She's fine with us leaving that and extending off of that with pavement. With regards to wetlands, we've verified that the property itself contains no wetlands, and that's our obligations to fulfill for site plan requirements.
Utility lines?
All the utility lines that we can locate are on the plan, including drainage, electrical. It's going to be serviced from the existing dwelling. Looking at the plan right now, I can tell you that overhead electric is not shown, so I'll have to add that to the plan.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments?
Just real quick to clear the record for staff going forward. The Board did grant a waiver of full site plan at the last meeting, that's fine, but we feel that the parking issue is a significant one, since no parking is going to be provided. Understandably that there is drop-off, and that's a very small amount. If the Board can just kind of clarify, add to the record that they feel parking falls under the waiver of full site plan, if you're fine with the applicant's proposal, at least that way it's clarified, and we don't have to have like an open question on that going forward.
So, Robert, help me understand the open question. I know that they really haven't delineated any parking spaces, but there's clearly enough room in the driveway for three or four cars to stack in there if they ever needed them.
Our issue is that they're supposed to be delineated on the plan, and there's nothing shown. So drop-off parking, while you guys may find it's perfectly acceptable for this proposed use, and that's fine, but we have no spaces shown or anything like that to go on, so...
Understood. So I appreciate that the applicant's representation is for drop-off-only parking. My personal feeling is that in terms of the driveway that you have, if for whatever reason you had someone stay longer even though you didn't want them to, or whatever, you've got the space for it. I certainly think that the technical requirement of delineating spaces on a plan is within the ambit of a waiver of full site plan review. What's other Board members' opinion on either one of those concepts?
Does the house, the original house, have a garage of any sort?
Yes, it's actually on the left of this plan.
Thank you. That's all, I just wanted to be sure, because that would have an effect on parking. If there's no, if there is a garage, I'm even less worried.
The proposed addition itself has an additional garage, a new garage, so there are two garages.
Fantastic, thank you.
Terrific. Bill, you had to comment?
Just a comment that the applicant testified that it was one person, one dog at a time. So I find the idea of delineating where parking is going to be for one owner, one dog is onerous, so I agree with your analysis, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Nelson, do you have any comment?
I'm all set.
Okay. Robert, does that satisfy the discussion you need to have on the record?
Absolutely. The only other thing I wanted to raise is, under the Public Works comment in the staff memo, item D, so it's technically item 6D, they talked about the fact that a large wetland is not shown, and as Kevin just said, it's completely on the opposite lot, so I would recommend the Board remove that as a proposed condition of approval.
Okay. So, at the point where we approach making a motion, which we may be close to doing, whoever makes that motion should remember to indicate that it's subject to all of the recommendations other than 6D. Any other discussion by members of the Board? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a full acceptance of this thing on a six, with the usual six months' time to get all the information put right, according to the letter dated June 27th, 2019, from Kelly Shemel to you, with the particular note that item 6E is deleted as not being necessary.
Okay, so Alistair makes a motion for conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the memo, with a six-month time period, except that 6D as in dog is eliminated from the list. Is there a second?
I will second that, but I want to add a question to that. It's your intention to leave the comment E in place, that is, the disposal...
No, we're going to dispose of it, according to what?
D we're keeping, E...
So, D we're keeping, E we're getting rid of.
No, other way around. Keeping the elephant, getting rid of the dog. D for dogs.
Okay, then, you're eliminating the need to pick up the waste, the dog waste, is that...
No, we're not. We're only eliminating the need to delineate the wetland.
Which is D.
Correct.
So we're eliminating D and keeping E.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought initially, but I think you turned me around. Okay, I'm all set with it now.
My contribution to whatever that confusion. Any other comments or questions? If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approval as discussed, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero for approval. Thank you for that, and thank you for coming back in. Thank you also for attending to all of the details that we discussed last time.
Rob, thank you, thank you for your time.
Excellent. Item five on our agenda is Lawrence Byrd as the applicant, and Dennis Drewan as the owner, continued review for a home occupation to permit a firearm cleaning and repair business. The parcel's located at 168 Camp Sergeant Road in the R1 Residential by zoning map and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 2B, Lot 310, Case Planning Board 2019-21. This item is continued from our June 18th, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Robert or Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
My initial comment was going to be that the applicant had not provided the plan or photographs as requested by the Board, but it appears that is being provided now, so the Board should take a minute to review that, see if it's adequate for what the Board was asking for last time.
Thank you. Now, I was not here for the initial hearing on this one, and so let me allow my colleagues to fill me in on the questions and the discussion that were asked and answered.
And, Mr. Chairman, the application had met all the criteria with the exception of a plan, so that was the reason why...
Okay.
At the last meeting, we continued it to, at the last meeting in June, we continued it to tonight. I guess my question would be to either Robert or Kelly, does this satisfy the requirement...
Yeah, the requirement is just to provide photographs that show that the driveway is adequate, and/or a plan, some sort of a plot plan. So it's really, it's vague enough where it can be up to the Board's determination of if they feel that has been satisfied.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I can certainly, by the plan that's been provided, identify the parcel, and I can certainly identify it in the photograph for my own benefit. I don't know if others have questions about the photographs and plan that have been provided?
No, Mr. Chairman, that is, looks like a reproduct, what I saw as I drove over here this evening.
Excellent. Okay. Please tell me where we're at with the application now, for anything that you'd like to offer as a continuation of the discussion from last time, after you introduced yourself for the record.
Dennis Drewan, owner of the property. In round one, I guess we were a little ill-prepared, we'll say, for the Board, so we've arranged it so we can walk you through the photographs, if you want it, through the numbers, if necessary, you know, as far as the location of the property with the main road, excess parking, so forth.
Well, you don't need to go into great detail, but if you want to offer a little bit of a presentation or a walkthrough of the photographs and plan that you provided, you went through the effort at our request to provide them here, so might as well have a talk about them. So tell me what you've got.
Okay, Larry, you want to walk them through the...
I have an extra set up here, because I, someone put two down beside me if you need one.
Oh, that's, did you leave an extra set up?
Yeah, I did. The property is long and narrow on 168 Camp Sergeant Road. We have, we have quite a few butters, but all, everything's going to take place at the house. It won't, as what was suggested by some of the people last week, there won't be anybody walking in the woods behind, behind there. Each customer will probably spend 15 minutes at the house. But in relationship, in relationship to room, the driveway is 82 feet long from the street to the garage.
Okay.
And there's, I don't, the questions that were, that were asked last week, or last time we were here, I don't see, I don't see any indications of any problems. The, I do have a 168 marked on both sides, both sides of the post.
I've seen them.
They're brass numbers, I'll shine them up a little bit so they show up better. They're kind of blending in with the post right now.
Understood. Okay.
I don't know what else I, what else I can tell you, unless it's something that you want to know specifically.
All right. So, let me ask a couple of questions, because I'm joining the conversation here, although I read the application from last time and noted all the details. I talked to staff about it as well. So your business is cleaning and repairing, correct?
Yes. It's tear-down cleanings, which most people don't do.
Don't do themselves? So let me go through some of the kinds of things that tend to be ancillary to cleaning and repair of firearms, just to be clear on what you're doing, what you're not doing. Is there, I'm sorry, can you hear me okay? You look like you...
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing.
No problem at all, I'll try to be louder, and I'll get closer to the microphone. Does that help, if I do that? Can you hear better now?
Safe.
I'm sorry. Let me speak more slowly, too. Are you going to do any reloading of ammunition on your property?
No.
Selling any of the materials for it?
There won't be any need for any ammunition on the, in the shop.
Okay.
Anything that's going to be done in that respect, if I do a repair that needs to be, needs to be fired to test the gun, I will pick up, I will pick up ammunition on my way to the, on my way to the range at Horseshoe Fishing Game Club.
Okay.
And that'll be, that'll be pretty much the end of it.
Excellent. Are you a member of the Horseshoe Fishing Game Club?
I most certainly am, yes.
Excellent. Do you have personal guns, a collection, any of your own things?
They, I do have personal guns.
Yeah, you keep them separate from this, separate from the work area?
Yes, there's going to be a safe for the business, and all my guns are in a safe, in a different room, different area.
Excellent. I was, to be clear, you have the right to do whatever you want with your own personal collection and guns, and it's not up to the Planning Board to tell you what to do with those? I just want to make sure they're kept separately and distinctly from this, and that we're focusing on...
They won't even be in the same room.
Okay. Do you already have a safe for the, for the business?
No, I don't, but I've got one picked out.
Okay. Excellent. Is that one of the requirements for the federal firearms license?
Yes, it is.
Is it any kind of safe, or does it have to be a gun safe?
No, it has to be a gun safe.
Okay. Other than the size, what's particular about a gun safe?
This one won't be too big. It'll probably be three, three feet by three feet.
Okay. Is it tall enough for long guns or pistols?
It'll be tall enough for long guns, it'll probably be about five feet high.
Okay. Excellent. What other equipment are you required to get to get the federal firearms license?
There'll be cleaning materials, cleaning solvents and whatnot. The stuff I use is non-flammable.
Interesting.
And, but there might be some flammable stuff there, in which case I am going to have a flame cabinet.
Okay. Is any of the cleaning materials, either flammable or non-flammable, is any of it toxic or something that shouldn't be washed down the drains, or...
Could you repeat that, please?
Is any of the cleaning materials that you have toxic or require any special care so that it's not washed down the drain, or...
Oh, no, no. There'll be nothing, no toxins going down the drains. I won't even need a drain for that. Anything, anything that's left over gets put in, gets put into a canister of its, of its own, put in a flammable area, a flammable cabinet, and once a week, or however, if need be, a couple times a week, I'll take it, take it to a disposal area.
Okay. Does your repair business contemplate refinishing guns or rebluing them? Refinishing the surface, putting the bluing back on the gun?
I can't...
The plating?
You're going to do any bluing or refinishing?
Oh, no, no, no refinishing.
Okay.
Too much equipment.
That's what I would guess. That's what I would guess as well. Any other, I don't know, metal working equipment, lathes, saws?
The only thing I'm going to have for, for equipment, I am, I am going to have a drill press. It's a ball, it's a, it's a small bench type.
Okay.
And other than that, it's going to be pretty much all hand tools.
No employees other than you will be working there?
No employees, but me.
Will any of your clients wait for you to finish your work, or they just drop off and pick up?
Yes, I'll, the client will drop off, drop off the piece, and I will give them a call as soon as it's finished.
Okay, they don't stay there and wait for anything?
No, no.
Does your, do you intend to have a sign out front of your business to tell people that you offer this service, or will they just know from other website?
The office is going to be incorporated in the space I do the work.
No sign? No sign?
No sign.
Do you have any outdoor lighting in your driveway, or anything that would keep it from being too dark, or if someone was approaching there at night, so they'd be able to see it?
I wouldn't think so, no. The driveway's pretty well lit. If it needs, if, you gentlemen think it needs more lighting than it has, because I do have a light on the garage, it lights up the whole driveway.
I was going to say, how's good on nights when we get around?
Okay.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman, the hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, so I'm not sure lighting is applicable in this particular situation.
No, I definitely understand that. I'm always cautious with hours of operation, because although we put the restriction here, it's a bit of an honor system to keep up with it, so, but, but I am glad to see that the hours are 9:00 to 3:00 PM, and they don't extend much further than that, so it's nice and compact and restricted. So the work area is 60 square feet?
Pardon me?
Your work area where you're going to do this is 60, six-zero, square feet? How big is the space?
Oh, the, the...
The workspace.
I think it's, it's about 60 square feet.
Okay. Is that a part of your garage, or interior of the home, or...
No, it's, it's in, it's in the home.
That has to be inspected for the FFL, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, it has to be inspected.
Okay. What else has to happen in order for you to get the FFL?
Pretty much, that's, that's all. If I get the okay from you, from you folks here, then, then I can set it up. I set it up, I still can't use it, I can't use it until I get my federal license. But at that time, they need something, they need something to look at. They need, they want to see everything in place. At that point, I'll, I'll send in my application to them whenever they get down and inspect.
Okay.
They usually, they're, they're usually pretty good. They, from the time they receive a, the paperwork, it usually takes them a week to two weeks, that's all it takes, if they get down, get somebody down there to look at it.
Have you had a federal firearms license before?
No.
Okay. Are you familiar with the process, just from talking to other people? My understanding as well is that the Police Department has to give some level of consent to this process as well.
As I said, I'll, I'll start all of that as soon as, if I get the approval.
Excellent. I don't have other questions on the top of my mind, I don't know if other members of the Board do or not.
I have no other questions. My only concern last time is we didn't have a clear picture of what was going, where the, exactly where parking in the building, although I was totally familiar with it, I felt we should have a plan on record.
No, it does, and it's something that we've required the last handful of times that we've considered, home occupations for either firearms repairs or sales. I think this will be the sixth one in town in a home occupation setting. Members of the public or butters who wish to weigh in? Anybody?
Pardon me?
I was asking, opening the floor for other people to weigh in, but I don't see anybody that is coming forward. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that... Mr. Chairman, I would move that the planning board grant conditional final approval, subject to the following precedent conditions to be fulfilled within six months. Obviously, successful completion of the federal firearms license or receipt thereof. The applicant shall provide verification to the community development department that the home occupation is covered under either the homeowner's or other applicable insurance. That no ammunition related to the home occupation, again, related to the home occupation shall be permitted on the premises. That there is no buying or selling of firearms as a part of his business. That the applicant, even though he's testified that there are not going to be any flammable, flammable materials on the property, that the applicant shall store any flammable materials appropriately and dispose of any waste associated with the home occupation in accordance with state and federal requirements. That no discharge of hazardous liquids, chemicals shall be permitted into the town sewer system. That the applicant shall provide documentation of proof that the home occupation will utilize an appropriate security alarm system. Such system shall be approved by the Merrimack Police Department. For use and a copy of said approval shall also be provided to the community development department. That the applicant shall provide documentation of proof that the home occupation will utilize gun safes for the storage of firearms related to the home occupation's operations. That the hours of operation in 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. And that no live firing of firearms nor manufacturing or commercial reloading of ammunition nor sales of reloaded ammunition shall be permitted on said premises during said occupation. Finally, that continued compliance with all Gunsmith requirements and regulations of the federal and state government are maintained.
What an excellent list. I support everything on your list, but first, I guess, let me do the business correctly. Second, please.
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson.
Yeah.
Well thought out, Bill. I support all of those conditions that you've outlined. I think that they're perfectly appropriate to this. The one comment that I would offer is that as to the buying or selling of firearms, although the applicant's committed to that and that's an appropriate condition to put here, if the applicant chooses to pursue a different route, he always has the opportunity to come back before us and make that discussion.
Absolutely, and because the federal firearms license allows the, the applicant to engage in that business, I felt it was appropriate as a condition.
I think, I agree. I think it's an appropriate condition because that's the representation the applicant has made to us.
Correct.
All of these other conditions, I would tell the applicant, you know, those aren't things that you come back and have a rediscussion about. But that particular one, because it's allowed by the license and it also is something that we've considered at other locations, I don't want the applicant to get the impression that this is a, a never-to-be-discussed-again kind of a thing if he chooses to do so. And perhaps he won't. That in mind. Any other discussion?
Does the applicant have any comment on these conditions?
Were you able to understand and follow all the conditions or any of them raise any concerns for you?
Will there be a printout or any of this that he can follow?
Yes, you'll get one. Yes, you'll get a letter that outlines all of the details that are required and the staff will work with you as much as they can to help you figure out how to check all the boxes off. I did my best to write them down, but I was even then just summarizing them, so I didn't do them as well as billed it. Other comments or questions?
Just, just a comment because there was a concern raised by an abutter regarding the proposed occupation being located near a school. The Federal Gun-Free Zones Act, if applicable, does not prohibit this, does not prohibit this type of business because the firearms are located on private property. So, I wanted to add that to clarify the concern of the abutter.
Excellent, Bill. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay, then it's appropriate to vote on the final approval of the home occupation, subject to all the conditions listed.
I would make a motion that we approve this application.
We already did that.
Conditional, oh, you're just, you, all right, well, I'll...
They already got a motion in a second. Zainah, did you catch all the conditions?
Seconded then, Mr. Chairman.
Then we've got a motion in a second by Bill and Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to vote for approval. You'll get a letter that outlines all of these conditions for you, so you know what you have to do. Thank you for bringing the additional information back.
Good luck, Mr. Bird.
What's that?
I said, "Good luck, Mr. Bird."
Yes.
Good luck. Item six on our agenda, Robert Curry is the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel's located at Two County Road in the R1 residential by MAP, Aquafor Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts. Tax map 3A, Lot 65. It is case number PB2019-20. Let's see, this is Kelly's. Kelly, what do we got?
Yep, so, just a couple of things of note. Both lots do comply with the lot and yard requirements in the R1 district. And then additionally, the existing house, you'll notice, does encroach on the front setback. However, Robert has determined that the house was built prior to this current zoning ordinance being in place, so it's considered legal to unconforming.
Thank you for that, Kelly. When you're ready, introduce yourself and then tell us about the proposal.
I do, Mr. Chairman, have one small thing to add.
Yes.
During review, it was questioned whether or not the property is serviced by Merrimack Village District. I did reach out to Merrimack Village District and confirm that, yes, it is serviced by their lines. So, it is a public water supply.
Did you find out where those lines are, how they get there?
It, it comes from Amherst down through the county and up to the Savannah Way subdivision that terminates right there at the intersection of Savannah and County, right at the town line.
It terminates here and it comes across the bridge then?
Yep.
It comes across the river to these two houses. Who knew? I had no idea the line went that far. Thank you for checking. That was important to me.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the proposed two-lot subdivision.
Sure, yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is... Okay, sorry about that. Good evening. Tucker McCarthy, I'm an engineer with Keach Horsham Associates. Here this evening representing the applicant and owner of this property, Robert Curry, who is sitting next to me this evening. This property is located at Two County Road. It is tax map 3A, Lot 65. This property is located as you are heading east. It is right before the bridge that crosses the Sauhegan River and the, I believe it's the Severance Bridge Road on the other side of the bridge. We are in the residential one zoning district. And as mentioned before, we also, portions of this property also fall within the Aquafor Protection District. Portions are within the Shoreland Protection District, the Flood Hazard Conservation District, as well as the Wetland Conservation District. So, the proposal that we are in front of you this evening, as stated previously, is to subdivide this parcel from one lots into two lots. The existing parcel is 9.36 acres. The two new lots will have buildable areas of 100,707 square feet and 246,868 square feet, which both exceed the required 100 square feet in the residential one zone. The new lot that will be created has a required 250 feet of frontage and the remaining lot has a good amount over 250. So, both lots meet the frontage and lot area requirements. We did do some test pits. If you look at page two and have identified some 4K areas for sewers disposal. So, this is a pretty straightforward proposal here. We, as we are within the Wetland Conservation District, we did go to the Conservation Commission. I believe that was two weeks ago and they didn't have any concerns. And I do believe that they provided a, a recommendation, a positive recommendation to the board for this project. Although we are within these Wetland Conservation, Shoreland Protection districts, there are no proposed impacts to those buffers as part of this project. So, that's pretty much it. So, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. I don't see the report from the Conservation Commission. Robert, do you have it?
The email just gave a very brief overview that they met with them, discussed it, and that they had no comments.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the board have questions noting that the stage of our proceeding is considering whether the application is complete and acceptable for review?
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is that I didn't quite see how you were going to provide the driveway to the, I don't know, the, the western portion that you've created. Is it going to cross the other, or is it going to come straight off County Road?
Yeah, so, on, on page two, we actually do show, it's kind of hard to see, I apologize.
Oh, I see, I've seen it. You're right. I've just suddenly seen it, proposed driveway.
So, the thing about this is, and that was like what other thing that the Conservation Commission asked us, is where is the house going to be? So, we don't typically show a house.
No, that's fine enough.
And we do show the driveway because they're just going to go...
I just wanted to know whether you were going to have a shared driveway or we're going to have a separate driveway?
It will have its own driveway, yes.
Thank you.
And I don't mean to butt in, but I also just wanted to mention that we did, as I'm sure you see, we did receive some comments from Public Works and we take no issue of those. I did briefly look at the site distance for a 40 mile per hour road, which is 305 feet, which we can easily, I can easily show that. So, I'm happy to, to close the loop with the Public Works on that.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, we are at the appropriate point in our proceedings to decide whether the application's complete. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the applicant, the application is complete and okay for our consideration.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to determine the application's complete. The application, the applicant has not requested any waivers of our regulations and none seem to be apparent to me as being required. Since this is a two-lot minor subdivision, we don't get into the question of a sidewalk. And so, does anybody else see any potential need for waivers of our review?
No. I did want to hear the applicant's answer to the question on the house location because you kind of cut him off there. You were talking about the Concom asking about the house location and your response to that was?
It, it's typically not something we show on these one and the two subdivisions.
That's true.
Because there, whoever builds a house on this is going to have to make sure that they're within setbacks and they'll determine a location of the house if and when that happens.
Okay, there is a 500-year flood line on this lot as well.
Yep, no, that's certainly something that they'll have to consider as well. I don't know, I'm not sure the insurance implications on that, but I'm sure there's something.
There may be some, yeah. That's probably where they'll, you know, if he checks beforehand.
So, the construction of the house is something that perhaps the buyer of the lot would come up with and figure out? There's no plan in place already for that?
Yeah, likely with, with a lot like this, we would be, they would request that we come out and do some layout because they certainly will need to do a certified foundation plan that will have to get approved by the inspector before they're issued a building permit to proceed in building the house. And that certified foundation plan will have to show that it's outside of all added, what's the word I'm looking for? Applicable setbacks. So, wetland buffer setbacks from property lines, that.
Okay. Other questions by members of the board? Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and tell the board any information about this proposal? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion by members of the board?
Mr. Boyd, I think has a...
Bill, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, earlier you testified, there was testimony that Public Water is servicing both of these lots, correct?
Uh, no, that's, that's actually not correct.
Okay, so how did, what did I miss regarding the MVD?
The thing you missed was this plan shows this lot is being serviced by the MVD.
It's, okay, when it is not?
I, it is. I thought the MVD doesn't reach out this far. This is the very corner of Merrimack where I didn't know the pipe went that far. So, we asked, I asked staff to look into that and Robert testified earlier this evening that, yes, in fact, the pipe comes all the way out, Amherst Road crosses the Sauhegan River and ends here.
Okay, so, the applicant just said that it's not serviced by MVD.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's check with Tucker.
Now, I'm confused, so can I, can I get some clarity on that, please?
Well, the existing house where I live, the water service is provided by a deep well. There is water service in the street. We actually have a hydrant right at the corner of my driveway and I receive a quarterly bill from MVD for that. And the, I, I would expect that the new lot, I plan to put it for sale and I expect that the new owner, resident of that property would connect to the town water. And I actually expect to connect to town water at some point myself. The well is working fine. We've had it tested and the water quality is, is excellent, so.
Good.
At this point.
So, under, under state law, when there's public water in the street out in front of you and you're not connected, you would need to have some kind of waiver from MVD in order to permit that to continue to exist. Normally, you've got a requirement to connect to public water when it's present in the property.
Would the previous owner have that?
Have you had that in the past? Have you gotten a waiver for your current situation?
I've only been there two years.
Okay.
Maybe the previous owner.
It may have. We should probably have some kind of condition of approval that requires the MVD. Is that what satisfies any forthcoming comments from the MVD?
It's in there.
My line of questioning wasn't complete as I was trying to understand the nature of the pipe because if they were running public water up to Savannah Drive, it'd be the question, were they running sewer up there as well?
There's no sewer.
There's no sewer in Savannah.
Water and sewer don't come from the same agency anyway.
Nope.
Sewer is town and water is MVD.
I understand the...
Yeah, I figured you might.
I understand the dichotomy, Mr. Chairman. I just figured if, if they were already running a water line, did they run a sewer line? Was going to be my question. They did not.
No. They didn't do that in my house either. I wish they would have.
Okay, thank you.
To echo Mr. Curry's statements, he's on sheet two of the plan. They show a proposed water service to his residence.
It says proposed during the future. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so the new lot will definitely connect because we haven't cited a well on this property.
The condition that staff has proposed that we include in our approval of this, should we do so, is that the applicant shall address any forthcoming comments from the MVD, Merrimack Village District, as applicable.
Okay, so it already kind of covers that note.
So, yeah.
That makes me happy. I'm satisfied with that. Bill, do you have any further...
No, I just, we've, 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 there's been policy discussion regarding septic versus hooking up into sewer. That's why I raised the, the question whether or not they had the ability to hook up to sewer. And obviously, since they don't, it's a mode issue.
They don't.
Yeah, it's always, one of the biggest Public Works challenges is that sewer is extraordinarily highly desirable from an environmental standpoint, but also one of the most expensive things to try to get everywhere and connect everywhere.
Yep.
It isn't always economical to go some length down a road for the number of residences that might be there. So, tough, tough puzzle to figure out. Other comments or questions? Since there's no abutters who wish to weigh in, there's no waivers, the appropriate action for the board is to consider whether it's the will of the board to take final action.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we grant conditional final approval to this application, subject to the various comments in the memo from Kelly Shimal dated...
June 23rd.
June 25th, 2019.
Is there a second for our last motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four zero zero to grant approval. So, there'll be a conditional approval letter coming your way.
All right. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number seven on the agenda is Hoyle Tanner and Associates Incorporated as the applicant and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct 40 multifamily residential units. The parcel's located at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial, Aquafor Conservation, elderly housing and planned residential development overlay districts. Tax map 43, Lot 1, case planning board 2019-22. And so, I have two things to offer for that. Substantively, I would recuse myself from this application because OVP Management is a client of my law firm. We're not going, did you do it with any substance tonight, because the applicants requested that we continue them to.
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth. With that in mind, what's the will of the board? Motion to continue to the July sixteenth. Is there a second?
I second that. We add that with no further notice to abutters?
With no further notice to abutters.
This is, point.
The, the point of doing a continuance is that that's the way the notice works, but.
But have, have they been before this board before?
No.
OVP? For this property?
This property.
For this specific project, no.
Then I would, I would be against the notice piece. I think we need to notice people.
Well, they were noticed for tonight.
I would notice them again. I would, I would not waive the notice, respectfully, I would say.
Along those lines, if you do that, that has several implications at this point. One, the cost of their abutters is about sixteen hundred dollars, so they would have a sixteen hundred dollar hit to absorb. And two, because we have posted site plan regulations, it would force them to redesign the site before they came back. So there's no way July sixteenth would work, just for the board's consideration.
Just to send out a letter to the notices that they're coming back on?
Correct.
Are you kidding?
Because it's at their expense, and it has to be verified mail.
And it's to all the abutters of basically apartment buildings.
You'd have to send it to all those, that condo association.
That, that said, it has been our standard practice for decades to continue as we've done here, or propose to continue as we've done here tonight with the notice handled the way that it's been handled.
Without re-notification, is what he means, yeah.
Even, even major projects of much concern were noticed once, like the Outlet Mall, those sorts of things. I was distracted for a second in terms of the, Bill, you've made the motion to continue.
Yeah, I made the motion to continue.
Some qualities.
Well, I just. I'm sorry, I just, I, you know, it.
Mr. Chairman, the lady in the public obviously has a comment. I don't know if she, we can let her have it?
No, you don't do public comments when you have accepted.
Okay, all right.
I appreciate it. We'll have, we can discuss offline. We're almost done with the whole meeting, and we'll kind of answer your questions for you. Bill, you have thoughts on your mind, and I want you to share them.
I, I.
It's been our common practice, Bill, for a number of years.
I'm very, I'm very well aware of the common practice, and I'm very well of past practices that relates to, to, to previous projects that have come to this community. But I also think that, based on where this proposed project is being offered, that even though we're continuing it, that we at least one more time are noticing the people impet, potentially impacted by that project, that this is going to be in their backyard.
Is it your view that we should do that?
You look strange, Alistair. I mean, well, you know, it's.
Should, should we do that as a matter of normal practice, because we?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a policy decision to take up at another time, and to be perfectly candid with you, yeah. I would, I would think if you've got, if you've got an applicant that has continued and continued and continued and continued, then I think there's an obligation there to let people know. I, I, I don't think giving one particular notice to, to abutters and then continuing in, you know, in perpetuity for five months, and then they show up and, you know, creates a, creates a coma of complacency on the, on the, on the abutters, because, you know, the thing's just been, you know, pushed down the road and pushed down the road.
There have been occasions where we've continued things at some length. That's not the case with this one. This is its first time on the.
I understand it's first time. I just, I just think, you know, if they're, if they're asking for a continuance, then there should be a re-noticing.
All right.
That is, that's, that is my opinion. I, I'm not going to withdraw my motion. I'm not going to.
So is your, clarify your motion. Is it to continue or to continue with notice?
It's, it, it's, it's to continue with notice.
Okay, is there a second for the motion to continue with notice? Okay, fails for lack of a second. Is there a different motion the board would like to make?
I'll move that it's continued without notice.
Continued without notice. Is there a second for that motion? Alistair seconds that motion. I appreciate what you're saying. I don't believe that changing practices on the fly like that is the right way to approach it either. And if there was a larger debate about notices and things, understanding what it costs and the impact on a project and an applicant is important.
And respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I'm well aware that that is, that's a whack. Sixteen hundred bucks, you know, that's, that's real money to the applicant. I understand that, and I respect that. But I also think that if they're looking to be a part of the process, they need to identify and respect other people that potentially are going to be impacted to be a part of that process, to be provided adequate, adequate notice. But I would hope that at some point, that this body revisits that issue to come up with a process equitable that balances the concerns of the applicants and the abutters, as it relates to public notice.
The reasoning behind the process in general, not related to this application, is, as this item or any other is, is on our agenda, and then have, and the abutters have notice, if they've got something to say, they could come here tonight and do that. And they very well should expect that the board could take it up and maybe finish the review of it here tonight. If it's continued for some reason, their interest in it tonight puts them in the room to hear that there's a continuation to a specific date. And if they haven't come down here tonight to do it, certainly it is nice that they'll have a second chance on July sixteenth, but they very well could have put them in a position where a final vote happened tonight, and there wasn't going to be a second hearing, and their decision not to be here tonight was very meaningful. So that's kind of how the balance goes. That in mind, I don't have any further comments on this. I talked about a continuance more than we've ever talked about a continuance. Alistair, do you have something?
No, no, all I would say, and as a justice, as a further information to everybody, the union leader has, did publish a fairly large, two column about this project, so people must know the union leader's watching it, so maybe that gives them some comfort or not, I don't know.
I don't know either. Okay. Without further ado, all in favor of continuing without notice, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chairman.
One opposed. Any abstaining? So it's three, one, zero to continue to July sixteenth. Next item on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern they wish to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple things to say. Maybe this is for discussion elsewhere, but I wanted to put it on the table. I have finished my review of the proposed changes to the subdivision regulations, the site plan regulations that are going to be heard shortly. And I find there's quite a number of things in there that I didn't expect, and there's quite a few things that aren't in there that I did expect, because I thought it was more a rehash of what our existing regulations were, and I find a lot of changes that have been proposed that I don't, at least I wasn't part of any discussion to make these changes. So I don't know if you want to continue, to take those up the night of the hearing, which I think is what Tim is suggesting, that we'll, we'll listen to you then, kind of thing, or if you wanted to have some discussion ahead of time. I think it would be appropriate to have some discussion ahead of time, but I put it on the table to let you know that I have some concerns like this.
Okay, so I don't think that it's Tim's approach or suggestion that the night of a final decision is the first time to have that discussion raised.
No, I didn't, yeah.
But there's been a couple of meetings where this has been presented with some PowerPoints and kind of walked through and did all of that. One of them was the second meeting in June that I wasn't here for. The other one was probably a month before that, done in two parts and sections. And so, you know, obviously, the reason the process continues to go on until there's a final vote is that if something does come up that somebody wants to talk about, you know, floor's still open. I would encourage you, so since we don't all have copies and kind of to follow through and go through it tonight, I don't think that tonight's necessarily the place to do that. But if you'd like to forward those comments or make, ask those questions of Tim and try to find out more about what those are about separately, and then obviously, any discussion that you want to have based on that when we have a final hearing, and if we get to a final hearing and it's a lot of complicated stuff, then we'll just continue it and wait till the next time around, till we get a look at it. We're not going to rush through the process, though.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware that there were some concerns, I think, are legitimate. There are some things that I think ought to be discussed among the board, as to whether we really want to make these kinds of changes.
So I don't disagree with that, but my impression was that we had those discussions. The, the board, with some presentation from Tim and some discussion about what, whether we liked or didn't like.
To probably help, I believe Mr. Disco wasn't present for one of those meetings.
Yeah, I think that may have been the case.
It's true, I was not. That's true.
We shouldn't penalize you for non-attendance, because it was for another good reason.
Yeah, it takes a while to go through this, and I had the impression that we were more or less restructuring existing regulation. And that was what I got from the meetings I was at. And I think I've seen things that are different that we should discuss, if we wanted to do them.
I want to make sure that there's a full discussion before we adopt regulations, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
So one way or another, we'll, we'll make sure that we can accommodate those. It certainly helps, I think, to check with Tim in between meetings to see if there's anything that he can provide for information. But to the extent we need to have a deeper discussion on things, I'm more than willing to allow that process to play out organically, and nobody's going to be rushed through a decision just because the next time it's on an agenda is the next time it's on an agenda. There is an element of this that does have a little bit of time pressure, because the stormwater.
MS four permit.
MS four permit requires some level of this review. However, understanding that planning board members need to understand and be supportive of the regulations we have is at least on equal footing in my priority list.
Yeah.
Bill?
Mr. Chairman, I think with great respect, you've also got to make this point fairly clearly, because I believe, and I may be wrong, I have it in my mind that Mr. Thompson has got a the, a intention to make a presentation, a formal public presentation, not just of us, in August. Am I not right?
Yeah, there's going to be a public hearing for the adoption. That's, I imagine, going to involve some level of presentation, but I can't speak for what he's planning to do.
So I think time is of the essence, is really what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but even if we sat here and we had a public presentation, if we're not ready to vote, then we'll continue it till the next time, vote again.
All right.
But if we are ready to vote, then we can vote.
Is it possible that Alistair could, Alistair, I apologize, if Nelson can provide an annotated copy to the planning board in advance of our next meeting, so that we can be educated on the.
I think that's a great idea.
The concerns, that way, when we, as you so aptly put, Mr. Chairman, seeking for this to organically develop, at least members of the board that are, that will be here participating will have an opportunity to, to look at Nelson's concerns. Because I, I mean, I know, I certainly do not want this, it's not patronizing, but, you know, Nelson, Nelson's institutional knowledge to this board and this community is, is.
Second to none.
Second to none, thank you. So I think it would behoove us as a board to, to have an annotated copy in advance of the next meeting, so we can understand where Nelson is thinking, so that we can have the appropriate conversation here at the next planning board meeting. At least, I feel that would be appropriate. I certainly would want to read Nelson's comments as opposed to showing up here completely blind and have a, potentially what could be maybe just a thirty, forty-five minute discussion evolve into a two-hour discussion, because nobody's had the opportunity to read Nelson's comments.
So I have no objection to the concept, except that it requires two considerations. First, Nelson's willingness to do that, to undertake all of that work, because no board member is obligated to provide that kind of homework unless they choose to or want to. The other consideration is that the correct route to distribute to the board is through the department, out to board members, just to make sure that we've, we're preserving our public record and minding ninety-one A properly. But those are my two comments.
Okay, I will do my best to pull my comments together then for the board. I can't guarantee it by the next meeting, but I will make an effort to do it by then, or, or the first meeting thereafter. I've got it all in scratch notes now, like the C page, such and such, you know.
Yep, I know.
This is aiming for an August meeting for a public hearing? And so that's really the timeline. You don't necessarily have to do that by our July meeting.
No, but.
Well, I think.
Sooner is better, but.
I think you'd like to have it sooner, but I'll try and have it sooner. Except I'm going to Cape Cod for a couple of weeks.
Good for you. Good for you.
That's why I, my initial comment was, we got to respect everybody's willingness and the fact that we're volunteers, and the board doesn't assign tasks to each other. Okay, other items of concern or discussion?
I'd just recognize former Councilor Tim Tenave, who's a member of the National Regional Planning Commission. Because of my new responsibilities here in town as Vice Chairman of the Council and now a full-time member of the Planning Board, I've stepped down from the Executive Board at the National Regional Planning Commission. I'm still going to retain my position there, but I've stepped down from the Executive Board, and Tim Tenave has stepped up. So I want to publicly again thank Tim Tenave for, for doing that. I think it's a great opportunity for the National Regional Planning Commission to tap into, you know, obviously, Tim's due diligence and his, and his experience. I think it's, it's a win-win situation, not just for the commission, but for the town of Merrimack as well. And just as a reminder, that if and when the two remaining seats are up for renewal, that we actively look for, for people to sit on the National Regional Planning Commission. Tim's an active member. Karen Elmer, who is a planner over in Bedford, is an active member. However, we do have two other people who are.
Inactive.
Inactive. Inactive with the Regional Planning Commission, and I would rather encourage people in the community that are looking to get involved at a, at a minimal, minimal experience, which is four times a year, you know, and squeeze in whatever you see fit to participate in other activities, but to open up and encourage other people to apply for those particular openings, because Merrimack, we are the second largest community in the NRPC. We pay a significant amount of dues to participate in the NRPC. As I'm sure Robert and Kelly, and if Tim was here, they could all, can attest to the value that the NRPC provides as it relates to our transportation planning concerns here in Merrimack at a, at a bare minimum, that it's important for us to have the appropriate representation that's befitting of our community sitting on that commission. So when the time comes, I would hope that we have people that, that want to serve or willing to step up and serve, so.
Excellent, excellent comment. Thank you for kind of offering the invitation for interested folks to come forward, and I'll certainly echo that and be as specific as it can be. Folks are interested in serving in that capacity, they should check out the website for the NRPC, which is probably nrpc.org or something like that. Find out what they do and learn more about them. I think it's fascinating to be involved with developments and infrastructure and, and the plan for where roads or highways or expansion products or projects or the timing of it. Just kind of knowing what's going on, not just in Merrimack, but in Nashua and the surrounding communities. It's really fun.
The regional perspective is growing, as I'm sure Nelson can, Nelson can attest to, because I know he's done some of the brown bag luncheons that the NRPC has put on. And I hate to use this term networking, but the networking and the, and the people that you meet from the various communities, I mean, you meet some great people, meet some, meet some great contacts there that might, might help you down the road as well. But just from a, from a regional planning perspective, the MS four permit is at the top of their list. Rail's at the top of their list. Some of the smaller communities have begun to tap into the resources. Solid waste is also starting to factor in as well. So there's a lot of interesting things going on at the NRPC that you don't have to, you know, if you just want to go four times a month, four times, excuse me, four times a year, you can do that, but there, there, there's ample opportunity to participate and also get some education. So thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. I, I echo the, the comment about interest in commuter rail and those kinds of things. I, you frequently encounter people who are interested in the subject and not necessarily engaged in something like that. And here's a way to really get, roll up your sleeves and get involved.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. And by extension, to the request for people that are interested in that, um, the town is loaded with boards and commissions, including this one, um, that have vacancies for alternate positions for us, but all sorts of positions. There's, uh, anybody that's interested in checking out volunteer positions should contact the community development department for the ones that are related to what we do, or look on the town's website, or contact your town counselor. Or, there's a million different ways to figure out more information about serving on these boards and commissions and committees and things. And you meet some really good people doing it, so it's a lot of fun. All right. Any other comments or questions about other items of concern?
Same people.
I would just say along those lines. Along those lines, did you wanna fill people in on the recent appointee to this board? Yes, absolutely. Thank you for reminding me that, Robert. Um, a familiar face from, uh, a year or two ago, Paul McLaughlin, who had to resign his position from the board because of requirements of work, um, has changed jobs and, um, some other various, uh, commitments and has sought and been reappointed by the town council as a full member of the board. I think he was approved a week ago Thursday. And we should probably see him at our July sixteenth meeting. He was a fairly reliable attendee his last time around. I assume that this is either the holiday or it's really close to when he was appointed and he wasn't expecting a meeting so fast or something, uh, for him to not be here. Paul was a great contributor to our board's discussion last time and I'm glad to have him back. Which is what I mentioned in his interview process. That does give the board a full panel of full-time members. We have one alternate. We have two more vacant alternate positions, if anybody's interested. Anything else on discussion items? No? All right, we've got two sets of minutes to consider. June fourth and June eighteenth. What's the will of the board with respect to the minutes of June fourth?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed.
Seconded.
Motion to approve the minutes of June fourth as printed. With a proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four, zero, zero to approve the minutes of June fourth. The minutes of June eighteenth are up for consideration. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion also that these minutes are approved as printed.
Seconded.
Motion second to approve the minutes of June eighteenth as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Also, four, zero, zero to approve the minutes of June eighteenth. There being no other business before the board tonight.
Chairman, I make a motion, the tweet, uh, go home. I mean.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Motion to go home. I will second the motion to go home.
Nelson, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Four, zero, zero, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for the work. Don't forget to turn your microphone off. Thank you.